Well, the meeting of the Van Oosteen City Council please come to order. It is 6:30 on Monday, March the 17th. Will you please stand and Councilman Russell Moore will lead us in the invocation.
Good morning. Now, God, we thank you for this beautiful weather that you've given us today. It's time that we can come as a free country to join and bless us during this time, give us guidance and wisdom as we try to make the best decisions for the sake of the city, Father, and I just pray that it be for your glory. In Jesus' name I pray.
Please remain standing for the place of allegiance and councilors, members of the people.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated.
Hi, Billy Plight, I'm in 1517 Great Park Drive in Van Oosteen, Texas. What I'm coming to talk to you about are at the last council meeting, there are an independent council session, there's a mayor and council closing comments, and we've been instructed on it before from the attorney as to what should be and should not be covered during that time. And I'm going to read it to you, the pursuant to section 551.0415 of the Texas Government Code, the city council made report on the following items: expressing expression of thanks, congratulations, or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city events, information about community events, and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Instead, the mayor chose in her time to present an ultimatum about how a certain item that related to agenda items wasn't handled properly in the way it was brought forward when in reality it was brought forward correctly. And I don't think we need to do things like that and bring things forth in a place where it's not supposed to be. Also, that agenda item about doing the agenda properly and the timing of the agenda, as we will see in what's happened tonight, is it would have been nice to have known that because maybe some of the things that were wrong in tonight's agenda would have been caught had there been given more time for people to look it over and work it out. But like I said, mainly what I think the mayor did in that case was illegal activity. Now, I'm not trying to get you prosecuted for that. The intention is just to make sure that we don't do stuff like that again. I mean, and then the other item is that since the item was tabled, the standard procedure for any item that's tabled is to bring it back the next meeting unless it is specifically tabled to another date. But it should have been brought back on the agenda this time, it's not. So we have to go back in and put it back on to even get the item back out so we can look at it. Then the other, the last thing that I wanted to talk about was the truthfulness of council members. It's very important that we represent the people and that we be truthful about what we're finding out. If we get information, we're not supposed to embellish it and make it look better than what it is by creating statistics of our own or creating ideas of our own. The reason I'm saying that is because when we were talking about the mayor having an office, the statement was brought forward that the mayor, that only one other place in the state did not have, you know, an office for the mayor. And that was not a true statement, and it also was given to us that that information was gotten from the TML. Well, I've called the TML at least three different times asking for anybody that knows anything about that, and they said they never asked for that statistic, they've never collected that number. If anybody, you know, gave it out, it was totally false, but they don't think that anybody would have given it out not knowing the real numbers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I hear you. Is there just one, Jennifer?
That's all I received, yes ma'am.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from February the 11th, 2014 regular meeting, and February 28th, 2014 special call meeting. Are there any questions or corrections for these minutes? Councilman Plight?
Just one second. No, thank you, Brett.
Councilman Mauer?
None.
Councilman DeSantis?
I think all the corrections are approved.
Right, what I submitted as corrections has been had. Thank you. At this time, is there a motion to approve the February 11th and February 28th minutes?
I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Any further discussion? All those who favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. At this time, we will ask Councilor John Jennings to please come forward. John, we would like to present this to you and to thank you for your dedicated service to the citizens of Van Oosteen. Serving on the city council is really trying, and sometimes it's right, sometimes it's wrong, but it really takes a lot of work, a lot of devotion, and a lot of fun, and we want to end this in a free kick.
Thank you.
He wants a picture. We have to have a picture.
All right, God. One, two.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consider and take any action necessary regarding 2012, 2013 fiscal year audit presented by Susan LaFollette of LaFollette and Abbott. Susan?
As the mayor said, I am Susan LaFollette, managing partner of LaFollette and Abbott. We did the audit for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2013, and this is our report. I do have a PowerPoint presentation I think will answer most of your questions. At the end of the time, if you have any further questions, I'll be right back. And I guess I'm going to be doing something behind you guys, so.
Would council like to enter the front row? Oh, presentant behind us. Anyone who would like, please stand, or you can just simply turn your chair.
Okay. The agenda for tonight will begin with the objectives of the audit, scope of the audit, annual financial report, financial highlights, summary of audit results, required governance communications, and our recommendations. First, the objectives of the audit. There we go. The objective was to conduct our audit in accordance with government auditing standards and to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material mistake. The scope of the audit, this was a full scope audit, and we took into consideration the governmental activities, the business type activities, which is the water, sewer, and sanitation operations, as well as the discreetly presented component units, the EDC and CDC in each major fund, which you have two, general fund and debt service fund. Annual financial report. The bound financial report that you have has various sections. The first section is called the financial section, and our report, the independent auditors' report, is on pages one through two. Management's discussion and analysis is page three through seven, and that is basically highlights of the financial data. The government-wide financial statements are on pages eight and nine. The fund financial statements, which are the ones that you're primarily used to dealing with, are on pages 10 through 16, and the notes to the financial statements are on page 17 through 39. Also in the annual financial report is required supplementary information, or RSI, and you have two schedules in that section. The first is the general fund budgetary comparison, which is on page 40, and the Texas Municipal Retirement System, or TMRS, schedule of funding progress on page 41. There is also a section in the back of this report that is called the compliance and internal control section, and our report in there called the independent auditors' report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards is in there, and that's on page 42 and 43. Financial highlights will begin with the government-wide financial statements, which are the first two. The statement of net position is on page eight, and the statement of net activities is on page nine. These statements include the primary government, which is your governmental activities and business type activities, and your component units, EDC and CDC, and they're prepared on a full approval basis. The first statement that I mentioned, the statement of net position on page eight, you'll see the total city assets at the end of the year were $15,547,914. Most of those assets are capital assets of $12,407,794. Total city liabilities at the end of the year were $9,326,639, and that does include your long-term debt of $8,113,357, and of that, $478,469 is due and payable this year, this one year 14. The assets do exceed the liabilities, and that results in the city's net position of The statement of net position on page eight, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about what that is. It is an indicator of whether the city's financial health is improving or deteriorating, and the city's net position did increase by $124,840, or 2% during this year, and last year as well, $125,848, or 2%. This is on a full approval basis though, and not modified like the front financials are. The net position mostly consists of capital, the investment in capital assets of $4,299,956, which is calculated by taking your capital assets minus your long-term debt. The unrestricted portion of the net position is $1,069,733, and may be used to meet the city's ongoing obligations to citizens and creditors. The statement of activities begins on page nine. The total city revenue for the year was $5,442,299. Most of that was program revenue of $3,596,988, and those are your charges for service, grants, and contributions. Your general revenues were $1,932,601, and that is mostly your property tax, sales tax, and franchise taxes. Total city expenses for the year were $5,317,459, which resulted in that net increase of $124,840, or 2% that I mentioned. In 2012, the revenues were $5,252,186, expenses were $5,126,338, and the net increase was The financial highlights, now we're moving to the fund financial statements, and those are the ones that you're typically used to seeing, and the general fund is the largest fund. It had total assets of $1,558,375, liabilities of $929,146, which resulted in fund balances of $629,221. Of that fund balance, the unassigned portion was $468,000, which may be used to meet the city's ongoing obligations. Now, that represents only 1.82 months of reserve. So if you took the unassigned general fund balances and divided them by total general fund expenses on page 12, and divided it by 12 months, you would see that you have about 1.82 months of reserve. Three to six months is optimal, and that might be something the city council wants to consider. Also, the general fund, we're still talking about page 10 and 12, the total revenues were $3,668,899, total expenditures $3,093,378, which resulted in a net change or decrease in fund balances of $26,479. In fiscal year 12, your revenues of $3,350,359, expenditures $3,359,000, that's wrong. I'm not sure where that number came from, but the net decrease is $78,000. And I guess the main point I wanted to make with this was the general fund has seen a decrease in fund balances for the past two years. The general fund revenues and other sources decreased by $154,254, or 5% from fiscal year 12. And the main decrease in the revenues really was your ambulance revenue, which decreased about $245,898, or 41% from last year. And this was primarily due to the transition in the third-party billing agencies. The other things that affected that increase from the prior year was property taxes went up $96,092, primarily due to adopted tax rate increases, and then sales tax increased $32,858, or 6% from fiscal year 12. The water and sewer fund are on pages 14 through 16, and the water and sewer fund have assets of $10,905,170. The liabilities were $6,186,371, and the total net position resulted in $4,718,799. Now, of that net position, only $10,748 was unrestricted that may be used to meet ongoing obligations. And that means the city sewer and water and sewer fund has less than one month of reserve. So you can do that same calculation, and again, three to six months could be considered The total operating and other revenues for the year were $1,760,559. There was also a transfer in from capital projects fund of $124,239, and total expenditures of $1,915,955, which resulted in a net decrease in net position of $30,657 for the year. Fiscal year 12 had revenues of $1,570,688, expenses of $1,644,128, which resulted in a decrease of $73,440. So again, the water and sewer fund has seen a decrease in net position for the past two years. I did want to go ahead and mention a little bit about the EDC and CDC. EDC had total assets of $655,643, liabilities $199,791, which resulted in a net position of $455,852, and this came from revenues of $114,577, which is mostly the sales tax, total expenses of $57,750, which resulted in an increase of $56,827. Same thing for the CDC, total assets $183,772, total liabilities $977, total net position, which is the difference between those two, $182,795, total revenues $100,476, and that is again primarily sales tax, total expenses $65,528, which resulted in a net increase of $34,000. The summary of audit results. Our independent auditors' report, which is on pages one and two of the bound report, is unmodified or clean, and in that, it summarizes management's responsibilities for the financial statements and the auditors' responsibilities. Also, our other report that is in the back, which I mentioned before, is the independent auditors' report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. It's on page 42 to 43. One of the sentences out of there is, "Given the limitations and definitions per the reports, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting that we consider to be material weaknesses. However, material weaknesses may exist that have not been identified." As well as the bound report, council, you've also received two letters, and one of the letters is called the required governance communication, and it talks about the qualitative aspects of accounting practices. Your two most sensitive estimates in the report are the allowance for uncollectible municipal court fines and ambulance services. The significant disclosures are long-term debt, and that's in pages five through seven. I'm happy to report there were no difficulties encountered in performing the audit. All of the recommended adjustments were posted and accepted by the city. We had no disagreements with management, and we did request certain representations from management in the letter dated March 17, 2014, and that was signed by Frank and Jennifer. We do have some recommendations. Per our management recommendation letter, which is the other loose bound letter that you have, we became aware of several matters that are opportunities to strengthen internal controls and operating efficiency of the city, but these recommendations should in no way be construed as derogatory, but we do recommend the following. We noted much less adjustments to the trial balance this year, and I have to say, I wrote to man Jennifer, who went to a lot of trouble to correct things. We came on board last year, you had a long way to go, and I definitely understood improvement. Frank and Jennifer have definitely worked hard on that. There were a few issues that needed to be resolved, and they weren't taken care of until the audit began, so I would just recommend, as I did last year, that the city try to work to close their rules, to get all these procedures and adjustments done before the audit begins, and management has accepted this, and they do have a consultant that they're working with, and you can call. We noted the general fund has unassigned fund balances of $468,000, which represents less than two months of operating expenses. We recommend the city continue to adopt budgets that will eventually increase the unassigned fund balances to an optimal amount of three to six months. And that was what I was talking about before, and management accept, their comment in italics is management's response, and they said management accepts and agrees with this comment. City staff will continue to recommend budgets that will increase the unassigned fund balances and work closely with city council to ensure said balance is increased to the recommended We noted the water and sewer fund had a net decrease in net position of $30,657 and an unrestricted net position of $10,748. Further, we noted the unrestricted net position represents less than one month of the water sewer fund operating expenses. The newly adopted water rate increases may help to improve the balances during fiscal year 14, but we recommend the city continue to adopt budgets for the water sewer fund that will increase the net position and eventually increase the unrestricted net position to an optimal amount of three to six months of operating expenses. Management accepts and agrees with this comment. It is believed that the utility rate increases passed with the fiscal year 14 budget will produce an increase in net position for the water sewer fund, and city staff will continue to recommend budgets that increase the unrestricted net position and work closely with city council to ensure said balances increase to the recommended amount. One thing I do want to say here, I didn't type this in, but if you don't have all of your expenses fidgeted, and for instance, depreciation, I think on your 2014 budget is much less than actual, if you spend at a rate like you did, and the rate increases don't make up for the depreciation, that unrestricted amount will go negative during 14, because you only have $10,000 to go, and depreciation's $256, and that's going to push it negative this year. We noted the city did not evaluate the collectability of municipal court fine receivables until during the audit. The balance for this receivable is significant and has increased during the year. We recommend the city review the court collection process and perform an analysis of the outstanding receivable balance to determine collectability and estimate the allowance for bad debt from a regular basis, and at least before the audit begins. Further, we recommend the city consider writing off old uncollectible amounts. And I do want to address this because the police did do, it really has nothing to do with their efforts on collecting this, it's more of the presentation on the financial statements. But let's look at the next slide. This is management's response. Management accepts and agrees with this comment. The municipal court has an extensive collection process which begins the day the citation is issued and continues this process with multiple notifications to defend it from us until the case is turned over to collections where professional collectors try to collect the balance. The collection agency has advised that the amounts they show as uncollectible are approximately 8% or less of the total outstanding amount. If these receivables pertain to criminal court costs and fines, which included state court costs, we should be extremely hesitant in deciding to dismiss the costs that belong to the state. Point well taken, and I actually agree with that. When I suggest writing things off, I wouldn't mean stopping collection efforts, I'm just meaning removing it from the financial statements or increasing the allowance, and you can continue to keep your efforts off the records. We did note the ambulance revenue decreased approximately 40%. to determine collectibility and estimate the allowance for bad debt on a regular basis, and at least before the audit begins. Further, we recommend the city consider writing off old uncollectible amounts. And I do want to address this because the police did do, it really has nothing to do with their efforts on collecting. This is more of the presentation on the financial statements. But let's look at the next slide. This is management's response. Management accepts and agrees with this comment. The municipal court has an extensive collection process, which begins the day the citation is issued, and continues this process with multiple notifications to defend it from us until the case is turned over to collections, where professional collectors try to collect the balance. The collection agency has advised that the amounts they show as uncollectible are approximately eight percent or less of the total outstanding amount. City's receivables pertain to criminal court costs and fines, which included state court costs. We should be extremely hesitant in deciding to dismiss the costs that belong to the state. Point well taken, and I actually agree with that. When I suggest writing things off, I wouldn't mean stopping collection efforts. I'm just meaning removing it from the financial statements or increasing the allowance. And you can continue to keep your efforts off, off the records. Um, we did note the ambulance revenue decreased approximately 40% and the receivable balance increased approximately 8%. Although variance is apparently due to a transition in the third-party billing agency, it's very important that the city monitor the collection process. Also, the city did not reconcile the revenue and receivable balances per the third-party collection agency reports to the general ledger until during the audit process. Per the collection reports, at fiscal year 13, the city has approximately 5,176,000 outstanding ambulance receivables. And a large portion of that balance is one or more years old. We recommend the city review ambulance collection process and perform an analysis of the outstanding receivable balance to determine collectibility and estimate the allowance for bad debts on a regular basis, at least before the audit begins. Further, we recommend the city consider writing off old uncollectible amounts. This is management's response, and they accept and agree with the comment. In transitioning from intermedics to emergidata and acquiring a Medicare revalidation, the city was not able to collect Medicare payments for nine to 12 months in fiscal year 13. All data to include outstanding debt was transferred from intermedics to emergidata as well. And this transfer made the outstanding receivables unavailable for an extended period of time and did not become available to city staff until the audit process had begun. Currently, emergidata is working invoice and collect all outstanding debt, and the city is collecting Medicare payments. And this is true, they did reckon, the city did reconcile this and did address it, but the audit had already been done. I would recommend that this process take place every couple of months because of the fact that this balance is so large. It, it's going to have to be monitored very, very closely. And now hopefully going forward with the new company, emergidata, this process will be better. We noted monthly internal financial statements, as presented to the city council, showed a negative balance for water revenue for the month of October 2013. Further investigation revealed that the negative balance occurred due to the manner in which unbilled revenue is accrued and reported. The annual revenue for the year includes 12 months of revenue for the period of November 2012 to October 2013. And that's correct based on the billing cycles. But we recommend the city consider utilizing a separate account for unbilled revenue and adjust this account at year-end for the accrual. And this approach will not distort, distort budgeted water revenue in the internal reports. They'll look as they actually are, because you didn't have negative revenue in October, as the council's report showed. But it was just because it's pushed back to the period before because of the way water billing is done. So management accepts and agrees with this comment, and city staff will implement the suggested procedure to report annual accounting reports. Another recommendation was to, the depreciation schedule contains a lot of fully depreciated capital assets. Some of them may not be in service, and we just recommend doing a review of that. And if they're not in service anymore, take them off. This really doesn't affect the financial statements, because the net effect is zero. But management accepts and agrees with this comment and will work to identify current capital assets and update the depreciation schedule. There were some recommendations that we made last year, and management implemented those. And I did want to commend them for that. I recommended that the city reinstate Fund 98, the General Fixed Asset Account Group, and Fund 99, Long-Term Debt Account Group, as required by GAAP, and they did so. I also recommended they reconcile revenue for the court system to the general ledger regularly, and they did so. I recommended that they print the court receivables, utility receivables, ambulance receivables, and other accounts payable details on the last day of the year or near there and reconcile the general ledger as part of the closing process. And that was pretty much done as well. The final thing was continue to follow check disbursement policies. There was an issue of transferring some money without proper authority the last time. That didn't occur, that matter is resolved. The EDC also, I had recommended that they continue to refine their year-end closing procedures to ensure all routine closing adjustments are posted before the audit begins. Excuse me, that's EDC and CDC. Management accepts and agrees with this comment that EDC and CDC board treasurers and management have met and discussed ways to prepare for the audit, including closing procedures and adjustments, as well as preparing the information on the request list before the audit begins. And they've, so moving forward, this process should be smoother. EDC last year had accidentally reported some depreciation on land. They implemented that correction. And they had filed some late reports for the 941 reports. And they had filed those on time and implemented that recommendation. In closing, I want to say thank you. LaFollette and Abbott P L L C certified public accountants. I really want to recognize Frank Baker, City Manager, Jennifer Cool, City Clerk, Eddie Peacock, CPA, City Consultant, and Anita Larkins with the EDC CDC. These individuals were very responsive to all our audit requests and have pleasure to work with them this year. So I'll open the floor to questions or comments at this time.
When do you start the audit?
When?
Yeah, when does it start?
I did, I, the field work, I start the audit in the summertime of planning, but I actually came out in December.
So you're talking about the date that all these things need to be done was December?
Correct.
Councilor Lord, do you have any questions? Councilor Castwell, do you have any questions?
Yes ma'am, I've got a few. I'm used to working against the government, I guess, when it's angry, it's coming to the bank. Some of my questions, sound backwards, I think. The, it's stated up there that the annual revenues in the water fund run from November 2012 to October 2013. And yet the fiscal year is October 1st or October 12th to November 13th. I mean, excuse me, October 12th to September 13th. Okay. And you're saying that's acceptable?
It is because of the way the billing. If you look at the billing cycle, October's bill, for instance, that caused so much review related to August and September. So when you go, when you're ready to record the revenue, you're supposed to do that on a cruel basis. So you're going to want to look at the period of October 13 through, like, November 13 through October, that 12-month period instead. See, each October will be pushed back to the later year.
And that's consistent?
That's consistent each year. So every year in the internal report, as I pointed out, the council committee showed a negative balance. But if you look at the way the accrual is, that was just because you could use a separate account and record those. But you would want to do it for that time period, and that would be correct and consistent. Because the billing is lagged. The usage occurs at a different time period than we did.
Okay, so given that, does the excess revenue that was earned, I guess, from the retroactive rate change, it went back into, I guess that would be October from November? Would that make it twice as much? I mean, did we end the year?
That was one of the things that I did put in the slides and later thought about. The, the refund that council approved in February was accrued back to 2013. And what the adjustment was is we reduced the revenue by the, is it 53,000? Reduced the revenue and improved the liability. So if you look on page, uh, page 14 of your report, there's some deferred revenue in the amount of 60,221. That has some other things in it, but that is the refund that the council approved. So instead of being recognized as revenue, it's a liability at the end of the year. And it also, we disclosed it in the footnotes. There's a, the last footnote, footnote 11, talks about subsequent events. And because council approved that after year-end in February, I pointed that out, but we did have to approve it backwards. So your revenue was reduced by that amount for the refund.
The, the next question, uh, on the, uh, collection of the, uh, charges and fines, et cetera. When those are sent to, out to a collector, in my experience, you usually have to pay anywhere from 10 to 30% to this collector to recover those costs or recover those fees. Is that built in to be the discount, the amount shown as receivable? Or is it considered a bad debt expense, or how is that accounted for?
Um, well, basically, most of the receivable balance is provided, an allowance is provided. So the 5 million, which is the ambulance, let's say 600,000 is on the police. Most of that is an allowance. So the net amount's going to show much less. And that allowance is going to come with whatever, either not being collected, paid to another place. Basically, I don't think they pay that fee until it's actually collected. So if revenue is brought in, part of it goes to the city, part of it goes to the state, and part of it goes to the collection agency. And you have a line item on your report if fees paid to a collection agency. And that revenue is reported and tracked separately. That answer your question?
For the most part, yes. Um, so, and, uh, just for my information, the ambulance receivables of a little over 5 million dollars, is that receivable from other cities or other?
Cities, cities, departments, Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance, and then insurance.
People that wrote in the notes from the dawn of time until now, that's not being collected.
Okay, so this is, at what, at what point, and that's a recommendation that y'all made, that you made, was to write off the part that is over X number of years old that you probably aren't going to collect, or?
Yeah, not necessarily write it off, but consider it. Look at it and say, is this, let's just say, 5 million dollars, 800,000 is what you're budgeting basically to get ambulance. That means at least, that's at least six years of revenue. So you want to take a look at it and return it. Is that realistically collectible today? And if not, you want to provide an allowance for it to net it down to much less and/or write it off. And if you write it off, you don't necessarily have to stop pursuing it. It's just not reflected on your financial records. So writing it off does not necessarily mean give up hope for court or ambulance. It means don't put it on your financials because it may or may not be collectible. And the older it gets, the less likely it is to be collected.
That is your question?
Any more? Councilor?
Just as a note on our financial statement that we got with our packets from the city, February 28th of 2014. It shows accounts receivable for ambulance services, 4,798,511. It also has a allowance for bad debt for ambulance of 4,510,600. That, that leaves about, what, 20,000, somewhere around 20,000, 300,000 that is perceived to be collectible? I mean, how, how do we determine? I, I see how we determine the, the accounts receivable. Those that should be billed, magical bills are sent out. But how do we determine that 4,510,000 is bad debt?
That is a management estimate based on, uh, collectibility in the past, a good guess, uh, that kind of thing. It, it's a management estimate that I worked with Landon Spint of coming up with during the audit. It's an ongoing process, it needs to be adjusted regularly if, if things become collectible, uncollectible. It's, uh, it's not an exact science, and that's why I put in the letter that it is a significant estimate that could, the actual results may or may not be. But at any point, given point in time, we have to come up with a good estimate that can represent what the financials are. But the estimate may not, may, may change. And that's why it has to be looked at very little, because the estimate may change.
Okay, so if you anticipate 500,000 dollars income from ambulance service at the beginning of the budget year, you're going to, you're going to say, we're going to make, we're going to bail 500,000. Should the discount be considered at that point? Or should it wait until it proves itself to be the correct amount? If we anticipate 500,000 income, we know we're not going to get 500,000. So should we discount it at that point so we don't overstate expecting to get 500,000?
Normally, that's not how it's done. Usually, you budget first the revenue you expect to receive for ambulance services. And that's just based on history, number of runs, whatever Landon comes up with and his calculations. You're going to get a budget. And you, you wouldn't want, not want to discount revenue. When you record the revenue, you'll hit revenue, debit receivables, credit revenue. And then at that time, you'll also make an allowance, if bad debt expense, and make an allowance to reduce that down. But you don't normally reflect it from your revenue.
But in a budget process, if you say you're going to have 500,000 income, should you, in the expense part of the revenue, have an allowance of that debt also? Or are you waiting to, actually, do you accrue that, that, the reality that you have uncollectible? My, my point is, if you budget 500,000 income and you budget 500,000 expenses, so you have, but you know you're not going to have that full 500,000. That seems to be a mistake, your income. And you know that going into, that you're not going to have.
I see your point, but the, you don't budget the balance sheet, which is the receivable and the allowance is balance sheet accounts. And so your best approach is to budget a realistic revenue. And if you don't think you're going to get 800,000 for ambulance revenue, then you should just budget less. Not necessarily reflect any of the expense, just don't put that amount in there in the first place. Just budget realistically based on what you're spending.
Realistically, part of the fact that you're not going to get 100% of your billings needs to be considered in the budget process.
Uh, probably not. I mean, yes and no. You want to, you want to do the right revenue, but you don't necessarily want to budget an expense for that. Just budget the revenue, saying you're going to get that here. Then go in, find, on the financial statements and take a look at the balance sheet, which is the accounts receivable and the allowance.
Do you have any idea how long this, this almost 5 million dollars as receivables out? I mean, years ago?
You have, Landon has a detail.
We've never done anything on it since the first day we ran the business, so.
But you keep, you keep doing the, the depreciation. You keep increasing it?
Yes, and no one's ever wrote it in all room.
Well, the, the same thing applies to the court fines. There's, there's a, a asset of 743,606, and there is a allowance for bad debt of 720,000. You're, you're believing the reality that there's only 23,000 out there, possibly, potentially. Because like you were saying in your own report, that you're not going to collect. Of, of the 743,000, you're not going to collect 720, because it's already written off. Is that?
We don't, we don't write any, we don't write anything off as far as the, regarding the court fines. I thought it was out there.
The same question comes back, is how long has it taken? How many years has it taken to build that up to 743,000?
As long as I guess, I, I guess as long as it's been type payment for, for the city.
The way the city system works is, once it's in, it stays in until collected. Same thing with the ambulance. And the ambulance service has a detail. I, back in 2007, they had a detail, and it's just been building, building. Back in 2007, they had a detail, and it's just been building and building.
And that's okay, but let that just go and go. As long as you keep current on your allowance for bad debt, is that acceptable?
It is because your financial statements, as you pointed out, only show the net amount. So if you look on the face of the financials, when it says receivable net, it's minus the allowance. And so it's not overstating. It's just, my only point was, you've got a large receivable. You could consider taking that off and reduce, you could reduce receivable and reduce the allowance. Or you could just leave it that way. But maybe just take a look at it and see what you want to do. Well...
We all have to retire someday. It just goes on and go. If any, or if you want, I guess what I should ask is, how strong is your recommendation to discount or discard some of this experience?
My recommendation to actually discard is not strong. My point with both of those was, keep an eye on your receivable balance and your allowance for doubtful accounts so that the net amount shown is proper. If you want to leave them all on there, just increase, as the AR increases, increase the allowance. And that's the only thing I'm saying.
What do you mean?
And do that before the audit process starts.
I noticed a number of times that it said the audit was adjustments were not made until the audit process ended. I noticed that on repeated times. Explain the degree of concern that you have. I mean, if you're reading it and looking at it from the outside, it looks like, oh, hey, I knew they're supposed to build them, and then build them. Question, is it that tone or is it more a tone that they forgot, they don't know, should know?
They certainly didn't forget and certainly did know. The process for, we're going to have to look at each piece individually. The city worked closely with their consultant and made numerous adjustments. Some things they did not get to, and we arrived. The ambulance detail was not provided to them until later, so that process was delayed. And the court, the court information was there, but the balances were not examined until during the audit process. And I'm not really going to say that's a terrible concern, but for me it is because it causes me to have inefficiencies. I'm auditing alongside the adjustment process, and I would prefer to have it done beforehand just so I can come in, look at that, and then rather than saying, okay, let me have that later when we, or whatever, just delays the process. But it's not a huge concern, but I did put it in writing. So I wanted to commend Jennifer and Frank and their new consultant, Abby, for really working and correcting a lot of things that needed to be adjusted. I really think going forward, we're going to be even better off. And I think that these written points will cause everyone to say, hey, we need to really take a look at this. So that's really, it's a friend.
Increase of $124,800. That was a commercial business restaurant, whatever, furniture store. We made, does that $124,000 mean that we made a net profit? As if it was a business that had bought inventory and sold, bought wholesale, sold retail, and had expenses in between, that signals that there was, for the operation of our city, a $124,000 profit.
No. No. What it signals is, basically, what it signals...
You can see how that could be implied.
Yeah. And you want to have an increase. But if you look back to your fund financials, you had decreases on both the water fund and the general fund. And that is because they're prepared on a modified accrual basis. And the ambulance revenue and court revenue are in deferred revenue. They're either, the amount that's not irreceivable and not in allowance is recorded as deferred. Because if it's not received within 60 days, the funds can't report it. But when you adjust, went through Gatsby's 34, you adjust over to those front two statements, they accrue all that and recognize it as revenue. So all of the billing that you did for court and ambulance got considered because it's full of pool. So it's sitting out there in AR, debit AR, credit revenue, but it's not going to generate that, just bottom line, you've got some cash laying around.
I think three years ago, we had, what the auditor log said, if this were a business, a real business on the outside, we would have made extra maintenance costs. Is there any way to calculate an amount that we either made as a net profit or a net loss from operating the city as a whole?
That's what this number is, really. If you want to look at it that way and crunch the numbers purely accounting wise, purely full accrual, recognizing all of those revenues on receivables that you may or may not get, you come down to the 128.840.
As a 124.840.
Yeah. 124.840. Yes. So that is your net profit if you were a business. But you have to bear in mind that those numbers are crunched using receivables, not cash receipts.
Well, a lot of businesses are.
And a lot of receivables, though, are, if I sell inventory, I'm going to expect to get paid within 90 days. If you write a court fine or do an ambulance service, you might not get paid immediately. So it may be profit, but farther in the future.
Okay. Medicare billing, it says that they didn't bill or didn't see Medicare bill in the language.
Correct.
Did the government not make Medicare payments for nine months? Or did we not bill?
The whole process, my understanding, was halted because when you chose to go to emergency data, the Medicare froze your number and said, we're not going to pay you anything until you revalidate with this new billing company. And once that process was done, then you're not paid. And that's just how long it took them. So your monies were frozen in that time.
When we went from one company to the next, did we know that that was going to be an issue with this court? Okay. The area management, I didn't say that when y'all leave, they're going to revalidate.
It really did cause your ambulance revenue to dramatically decrease this year because for a large portion of the year, that thing was coming in. So your budgeted amount of $800,000 was, could not be met just because the whole billing process kind of came to a halt until they got everything. Medicare, Medicare, Medicare does what they want to do. And it usually takes them six to nine months. So that's probably typical. And hopefully, the new company is going to be much more proactive and help the city to collect that money that they're seeking.
Have they started at any point to indicate that they're going to start getting that money? The money that we earned during that nine-month period that didn't get paid, do we still get it at some point in the future?
Yeah, not in a month's sum, but it does still matter.
So what is our current company that didn't tell us that we're going to have to wait nine months? Our exiting company didn't tell us that?
Well, it wasn't just the switch. It was also the new Medicare company for the state of Texas. Medicare hired a new agency, she was representing them in the state of Texas. So any changes that were done under Medicare application, you had to do a revalidation because of also the new company.
And we didn't anticipate that that was going to have to be done. Nobody knew until, until we were able to have that as an issue.
But now, it has been approved, and I did look at subsequent receipts. And although they aren't quite to budget, Medicare monies are coming in in month sums of $20,000 to $30,000 here and there. So...
How long would it take to recruit that nine-month loss?
I do not know.
Is there any indication from anybody?
Not really. There's also Medicare, right now, started last year, the highest refusal rate that they've ever had. So a lot of those plans are still a fill's process. I've run that Medicare's taken over a year before they said, okay, of course Medicare only pays about 40% of what they charge because they pay what they're paid. So, you know, depending on the fill's process and all that stuff, if they do decide to pay it, I know the denial rate is extremely high, but now we're going to, so it is filtering it. There's not a date you can say, we'll hide it all by this time.
I do know that from working with a lot of home health agencies that I have with clients, that Medicare is very specific in the way, if you bill, if you don't code it properly, they'll deny it. So it may have been a good move to go to a company like emergency data to, that knows the billing. Because if they don't put, if it's code three and they put code two, it's denied. And then, and experts know this billing and understand Medicare. So it's possible that going forward, this will be a change or something. It was just a painful process for this year. Hopefully.
So, told me that, yeah. 8:62, is that in this page? That's our total, total debt?
Yes. That is your, that is your total long-term debt for the city, citywide. And you can kind of see a good example of your debt if you go to page 27 of your report is a complete breakdown of all the beginning balances, additional debt, debt retirements and balances, ending balances, and amounts due within one year. So the amounts I quoted were what was on the face of the financial statements for your long-term debts and that. And if you took the governmental debt of three, the current portion, $313,300 and $165,169, the water fund, you come to that $40,000 number, which is your current long-term debt. That doesn't have anything to do with your payables and things like that, just your bonded contractual debt.
The breakdown that you gave us of debt and each bond, the one in particular that comes to mind is for the water line. CGMA water line was 8.88 for all four cities. And each city's at a $2.2 million part of that, between Hal and Austin and ambulance. The amortization schedule that we did present at the end of the time of the financial information shows that that went into effect in '07, when we started that bond. And we paid interest only until 2024. And then 2025, we start paying interest and principal. At the end of the time from '07 to 2024, we still owe the $2.28. I couldn't find something that represented those figures in your presentation. Is there a possibility that there are combined amounts or...
There is a possibility. I'm not sure where you're getting your figures, but basically, the CGMA pipeline debt is in three phases, phase one, phase two, and phase three. And the amounts are, as stated, on that $537,502,168,750 and $1,105,000. It's possible that some of those things are rounded. These are the, as best I know, the amortization currently.
That's the current price as opposed to the original price?
Yes. Yes. And some amounts may have been paid...
It's still substantially higher than $2.28. And that's what I interpreted as what was presented to, that was the debt on the bottom line. And here you're saying that there's three different portions in there?
There's three different portions. You had a portion that went into effect, let's see, the first phase was $700,000, and there's currently $537,500 outstanding. The second phase was $8.6 million for all cities, but your portion was $2,168,750 in that city. Yeah, that's sitting there. And then the third portion was $1,250,000, and you have outstanding $1,105,000. A total contractual obligation to date is $3,811,250.
That's just for water.
Just for the water line, yes.
So Bank of New York, where we owe, maybe $520,000, what is that for? I'm not asking you to answer questions that you're not obligated to?
Well, I can tell you what it's for. It was, it was, yes. The proceeds, I'll read it, it's on page 32 of your report. On May 1st, 2011, the city issued general obligation refund bonds, series 2011B, in the amount of $1,605,000 payable to Bank of New York. The proceeds were utilized to restructure city's gas service refinances. So it's really just restructured.
Refinancing the bond.
Refinancing.
But what was the bond original for?
Original?
What did we borrow of the $1.5 million original for?
Well, I would have to think back in my mind, but basically, since it's on the water fund, you had two portions of that 2011 series. Series A was in your governmental activities, and series B was in your water fund. So I'm going to say water improvements on the series B.
Possibly a sewer plant?
Possibly a sewer plant, possibly a water tower, any kind of water sewer infrastructure that was built. Anything that you've built.
I'm just curious, instead of this thing that we owe Bank of New York, the billion and a half, I want to know what we bought that we had the water billion and a half to pay for. And I'm guessing the sewer plant probably falls into that price range and that.
I would have to go back. It's not the system to talk about.
That's the thing I asked you, I said, we don't have to answer questions you shouldn't be answering. Maybe the question should come from the city. What did we owe, we know we owe the Bank of New York, I believe, an half, but what did we buy that we had the billion and a half to pay?
Well, you could look back in the bond agreement, and it would probably talk about the specific series that were refunded. And then you could trace back from there what those series, say it was 2002 or 90, I know that you've had some 1999 and 1998 debt and 2000 series. This would tell in the bond agreement, which you could get. It would tell you what series were refunded, and then you could look to that series and see what that actually paid for. I wouldn't know off the top of my head, and we could find out.
We also owe Bank of America another $1.345 billion, and Bank of New York another billion. So I'm just curious, what we owe money on?
Well...
And instead of me directing the question, you, maybe it should be corrected that this page that was presented to us tonight, you could identify what each one of those, I mean, one says part of... And we've done it in the past, and all you had to get your question out. I'm just curious, where are we, what we have that we owe 8 billion dollars?
If you look over here, if you want the 2006 series, it was, it was issued, they were refunding bonds to refinance 1995 debt. And so what the city has had been forced to do, which most cities are, they get the bonds, it's too much, they've got to refund, refinance, extend the payout to 34 years, lower interest rates. A lot of these bonds were issued during times when interest rates were really high. Then they came down, and it made more sense to refund them at a different, lower interest rate. And that's what a lot of that refunding is.
Right. I just wanted to know what the original was.
And you could get with your city official, they could tell you, as it says in the footnote, what series they refunded, and you could look at those numbers. Those know the reason it says.
Okay. And the last question is, the city owes, right now, 8 billion dollars. And that's all we have?
That is all you owe on long-term debt.
I wish we had all the talk.
Well, if you look on the page eight, your total liabilities, except... Well, if you look on the page eight, your total liabilities, except for thirty, two thousand and thirteen, are nine million, three hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars.
So, negative three is short-term.
Yeah. You had accounts payable, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, other accrued liabilities of thirty-four thousand, accrued interest of six hundred and four thousand, customer water deposits of one hundred and one thousand, some deferred revenue of three hundred and seven thousand, which is mainly for S and M projects. And then your long-term debt. I was talking specifically about long-term debt. But your liabilities are nine million, three.
And that's important to determine debt per person?
If we wanted to, yes. But your short-term liabilities, those are probably been paid. Because most of the accounts payable, the city turns over within sixty days. So I'm dealing with older numbers, wanting to, you, you could, you want to get, uh, if you wanted to look at that, it's a good estimate of where you were at nine million.
Yeah, um, in dealing with long-term debt, uh, business or, um, governmental activities, and I'm looking on page twenty-nine. It's showing, uh, two million, eight hundred seventy-two, six oh four. I was working with the number of, of three thousand forty-six, which was the population according to the census. I see that you're, uh, you use the population as three thousand, one hundred and eighty. Where did that number come from?
I didn't use any populations.
That's, that's what you, what you requested as far as debt per capita?
Okay. And I haven't seen this.
That's from, that's from CGMA, that population number?
Okay. Because the census had three thousand forty-six and I had been working with that number. And then.
CGMA accounted for all the houses.
Okay. So our population increased effective.
Estimated population right now is thirty-one eight.
Thirty-one eight, okay. And then, uh, on page thirty-three of the audit, it had a, the ten million, uh, two hundred seventy-four, three forty-one. Uh, if you add those two together, you're, you know, uh, what, thirteen thousand versus the eight thousand or nine thousand? So the, uh, would, would not the debt per capita be higher than, than, uh, what was given to us here of two thousand, five hundred and thirty-five fifty?
What those schedules are, is the debt requirements for, the first one is debt requirements for governmental activities. And the second is the debt requirement for the water fund or business type, including interest. So if you pay it out on time, per se, that's how much you'll pay, including interest.
So it is more than, than just the principal amount?
Right. And we would not report the interest on the balance sheet, which is what page twenty-seven is, because that's strictly a balance sheet. If you, if you, then you don't, you report interest as it occurs in its expense. So we, we showed you here though, you're right. If you look at that, that you'll see one column says principal, one column says interest, and that other says total.
Right. And I was going on the total amount of what we owe.
And that is correct. It's paid on time. Now, you might refinance, you might, um, pay off early.
Yeah, right.
And then you would have.
Fat chance there.
I have to laugh. I have to laugh. But no, ser- seriously. You, you do owe the interest, but only as it's incurred. And you don't, you don't necessarily have to include that right now, but ultimately, we do.
You do. Okay. So. Yeah. Yeah. But I look at interest.
Van Alstine is not unusual in their debt. Every city has to incur bonded debt in order to provide the city services, water, sewer. If you want those kinds of things, the only way to come up with the money to do it is issue bonds and pay on. So if your population increases, which hopefully it will, uh, then they can share some of this debt.
Right. That, that should hopefully go down now. Uh, on page fifteen, it's not under the proposed monetary fund. Uh, you have operating revenues and operating expenses. What are the non-operating revenues, expenses?
Well, just by definition, things that are not incurred from customers to operate the water. The top, the operating revenues include water, sewer sanitation fees. Operating expenses are your maintenance, depreciation. So these are your interest income, your checking account earned, two thousand dollars, and your interest expense. Your debt incurred this amount of interest this year, two hundred fifty-three thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars this year. And that's your expense for interest incurred. And it's just a classification, uh, to put it there because it's not incurred for, as a conjunction of just running your business, which is what a water fund basically is, customer charges and then water fees, depreciation, those kinds of things.
Okay. My fingers slipped out of my, my spot. Let me, um. Uh, let's see. There's one other question I have. And dealt with, uh, what would be, oh, here we go. And I'm looking on page five where it's talking about city of Van Alstine's statement of net position. Uh, restricted and unrestricted. What falls into those categories?
Well, to get a better idea, just turn to page eight. And you will see the full statement of net position. Go down to the bottom where it says net position. The first line is net investment and capital assets. And then the restricted items. Debt service, deposits held by GTA, court security and technology, capital projects, police seizure, the S and M project and library technology are your restricted amounts. And your unrestricted is just everything that doesn't fall into any of those other categories.
Okay. Restricted amount would be what? You specifically have to spend that.
Yes.
It has to stay within that.
Yes. Because if you have a capital projects fund, it has to balance. So the, the balance that is in that fund balance at the end or net position stays with it. Same thing with, um, your capital projects fund, debt service fund. Both of those fund balances are there. GTA has two hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars. They require you to pay in each month certain cash reserves amounts. And they build that up to hold for debt or other destruction costs that they, they may have. Uh, and then also if the police sees something, those assets are for a specific purpose and they're restricted. Same thing with the court security and technology. Those numbers are by law restricted. So that's where, where those balances come from.
Okay. Good. Uh, under these, uh, statement of activities on page five, too, uh, the general government and streets in twelve, they, they went up. And I was just, what would cause the, both of those two categories to increase?
Well, the streets is pretty easy for me to say. You just did some more, uh, street work. But I also think there's an extra person that went from one visit parks to streets.
Okay.
And that salary would be reflected in that line item. The general government would just be all the expenses that don't fall into one of these types of categories. And most of the time, general budget expenses go up. If you look to your budget and what you budgeted for, those are the types of things that are going to be in that. It's going to be salaries, uh, operational costs, anything that's not streets, court, parks, library, police, fire, ambulance, water are going to be in the district general budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Could I ask one more question?
Yes.
I want to do one.
Okay.
Uh, on the state, on the, the amount of money that goes into the fines and stuff like that amongst the state. When we go collect it through the collection, do the states still get their full amount and then we get what's left over? Or is the state split, the collection fee and everything?
I don't think the state pays for any collection.
No. The collection is on top of, say, if you owe two hundred dollars and it's thirty percent is what the collection agency gets, you still get the two hundred dollars. They're going to, so the city's not, say, losing money. They're getting their amount. But the collection agency has the, by law, they can charge up to whatever percentage it is.
Okay. So on the medical stuff, we don't, we do that. We don't, we lose the collection fee on Hill-Bright card, do we?
No.
We don't lose it on either?
We pay it. It's better for them to go out and do that. They own all the companies, they pursue all those. Because it's based, they get a percentage of what we collect total. So we don't pay for that collection fee. They want to go and send it to collections and pay for it to go get that. Because that frankly reflects how much they owe.
Okay.
And I do know the state court costs are just mandated. There's a, there's a list of, of the fees that they take.
So.
Okay.
If there are enough other questions, is there a motion at this time to accept the audit as it was? As it presented? You have a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, sorry.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is your hand. Thank you, Mary. The next item on the agenda is considered to take any action necessary regarding adopting a resolution presented by Parks and Recreation Board, recognizing the Van Alstine Sports Authority, VASA, as a preferred league for youth sports in the city of Van Alstine. We, uh, we have tonight, Mary. Would you like to present this to the panel, please?
I am the president of VASA, as well as newly nominated to the Parks Board, so I appreciate that opportunity. What we are looking to do is improvement as we've done over the past three years for the fields. And it's not just Forest Board, it's not just East Fields, Old Ham, or the Four Parks, for personal. What we are looking to do is come in and be more prepared and not to go into each individual field if y'all would like to know where they are. Uh, but what we're asking with the amount of money that we're getting ready to spend and wanting to do to improve our facilities as we've done in the past, is that VASA takes on the ownership of those fields as far as the scheduling. Uh, everything will come through VASA and it kind of takes the ownership off the city and the public works department for us to come in and schedule those fields. We are looking to put a sign that each one of the fields that says, whether it's open or closed due to the weather, also has our contact information on there on how to get scheduling in the field. By catching those, those people and coming in and wanting to do that, that helps everybody keep on the same schedule. So we don't have somebody coming up and going, well, I've got this field. You don't have, you need to get off and create that animosity. That's not what we're here for. Uh, we're here to recognize the local youth kids here in the rec league. There are several teams that play on the outside. If they want to practice here, they live here. Some don't. They only have one member that may live here. And that may be from Rockright, Sherman, Autumn, all the surrounding area. Uh, we want to have a place where our local youth can come to practice and have kind of a preferred scheduling of the fields as you would. There are specific dates on when those certain teams request, for instance, softball, we're requesting on Wednesday. Baseball, we're requesting on Thursday. Any outside teams, whether it's softball, whether it's a select league, they play in McKinney, anything like that, they request on, uh, Friday. And then from that point, we open it back up to everybody on Saturdays. So if there's any available slots and somebody still wants to practice, we open that back up and then we create that master schedule. We did that in the past and sent it to Steve and Mr. Baker, informed you guys. If they get phone calls, they can see where's FPD, they turn around and redirect it back to us. So we're just trying to make sure we can create that smooth transition and also an effort to help make the parks look better as much as we can. So working hand in hand with the Parks Board, uh, I think is a good thing. I know in the past it was done that way as well. And we're looking to, to get there and help to improve the process for everybody.
Will you collect revenues?
The, what we're looking to do here is just by naming VASA as the preferred one. So that kind of is the law ruling. Uh, what we've come up with is we've looked at Prosper, we've looked at Melissa and kind of their agreements with the cities. And that's what's been proposed to. Uh, once that's established, then we'll go back to the Parks Board and start outlining fee structure. We're saying bring outside teams and stuff. Uh, I'm kind of the mindset, I think, that can be a pro-rated type thing or stair step. Where if you have the majority of team that is made up of the Van Alstine kids, but even though they chose to go play in Melissa or somewhere else, that maybe they have one rating. If you get to other teams that are outside that don't have any, uh, I'll give you an instance. There've been many a times where we go to Forest Board and there's a bunch of white and purple shirts where they're coming from Anna to practice on our field. Because Anna at the time didn't have any location. Uh, so I think there's different things that we can look at to do different things in conjunction with what the other cities do as well.
Any fees that you potentially could charge have to be with the Parks Board and the Department of Customs?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And then what we would do is act as the mediator since we're going to be the ones who are scheduling it and then bridge upon the amounts that they would pay us and in turn, we turn around and give that right back to the city. We're just kind of the mediator between.
I'm not sure how the concession works out there. Would you, would you own the concession? Where if there was a tournament from, they're renting the fields or, or A B's fields, where they have the concession, would it be, yes, they have the concession, or it'd be the city that runs it? How would that be?
We would have to look at that. We haven't done that in the past. Uh, it's not that I'm not open. We've got a lot of young kids, you know, at the high school that would love an opportunity to come, look to make some extra money. So that could be a way that we could get a staff. VASA is not looking to own the concession stand. We do manage it throughout the process and make sure it's cleaned up. In fact, there are two or three doors down there that we're looking to get repainted this year. So we could help that facility look nicer. Uh, but we could definitely look at doing something like that to help the facility.
But at this point, you're not anticipating having a concession. It's, it's very lucrative property.
It is. It is.
You're not, at this point, had an eye on that, on that golden egg concession?
Well, we host our games and kind of how we do it on, on this side of town, the, the teams we play with from Anna and Melissa, there's another team, it's just those three yet. Princeton did participate in Dixie League this year. Uh, so what we've done is we've kind of rotated Saturdays around between the three towns. So we do a block schedule. So that's really where you start making the money in concessions. But at the same time, we use that money to turn around and pay for umpires. So, uh, but we try to, the older age groups didn't want to play on Saturdays because a lot of them would play tournament baseball and other locations. So we've now put those during the week. Well, the nine and ten-year-olds, they start with two umpires. And that's seventy dollars a game. I don't make that during the week when we start doing that. So it's really the weekend where we host the, the little kids, the five, six and the seven and eight-year-olds. When we host them, that's when you get grandma, grandpa, aunt and uncle to come out there. And that's what we make from growing our money. So I've said this year, we're only going to be hosting, I believe, we just didn't skip the week. Well, I believe we've got two hosting dates on Saturdays, maybe three at the most. Now, obviously, if you have a trainhouse, then we would put them on Saturdays to try to help make that. So right now, the most we've got is we're hosting weekends on Saturdays.
Who, who are we going to hear a thing if we, if we, you being the, helping the?
I'm the man. I'm the one.
I mean, what other citizens, what other entities would, would not be, and there may be people here to speak to that tonight. What, who, who's, who will feel like, not a shortage, and would that be in the same, be the government, not the, the?
You know, you might get a little pushback from a few, but most of them understand because they've gone through this VASA program and then they've decided to branch off on their own. Uh, one of the biggest differences that they want to do that and branch off actually is kind of two. One would be if they go to McKinney, that's in a different baseball league and they can create their own team. Whereas in the Dixie League, depending on a certain age group, the maximum I can protect a kid is six. So if I've got ten, eleven, twelve, ten on the age group, you've got to get sign up, the max that can do is six. And that's in the thirteen, fourteen, fourteen. When you're in the little ones, they only can protect up to four. And that goes along with the Dixie rules that we're going to buy. So that's one of the main reasons that they leave. They can pick a whole team and then leave at that point, go post in the rest. The other one is because they don't want to volunteer for work on the fields. Which is what we do is take care of the fields. We bought the equipment and they'll drive. We have our volunteers that come up and supply the whole widders to get out there and drag it on the field to make sure it's fresh and ready to build. ready to build.
Look, I, I'd stay on the concession, because I've, I've been there, kind of through the back door, I've, I've provided product to be sold in those concessions.
Yes, sir.
And I know what they're charging for their product, and they called back and said, "We need another 20 pounds of these."
Yes, sir.
Um, there's got to be, it's got to be somewhat lucrative at, at times, just like any, any restaurant or any food facility, you're gonna have good major and bad ones.
Right.
If that profit, what, what do you do with the extra profit after you pay the, the umpires? I mean, does that just go back into the...
That goes back into the, the funds for VASA. We don't necessarily separate it out per sport, so it's all...
It's all, it's all maintenance of the fields?
Yes, sir. That goes all back into the maintenance of the fields, or it goes back into...
I, I just am aware that there's a significant amount of money that can possibly go through concessions.
Right. In the last couple of years, we've done other things to help supplement that, because we've taken those games out Saturday for the older kids, and now put them during the week. So, that's really kind of furthest a little bit, so we'll offset that last year. Last year, we started the banners, so I don't know if you've noticed them, three-by-five banners up on the backstop, and that was to help offset that, which in turn, we turned around and bought new catcher gear, we bought some protection nets and those kind of things that helped out the kids on the field.
Oh, in VASA, I know that you have real, uh, regulations also in the Dixie League, but how many, uh, how many do you have on a local governing board?
In our articles of...
It's not, not one that's shown on paper?
Right, yeah, we started out with five. They started out with five back in, I believe it was May 1st, 2005. Uh, and I can name off the gentleman here, they've got it in my notebook over there.
Nice.
And they started out, as this has grown, even the years I've been involved with it, this is my fourth year to be involved as far as on the board part of it. Uh, this past year, uh, and I'll, I'll be back up, in the first year I did it three years ago, I was, I took over as the baseball commissioner. Uh, the next year, I was the BP and assisted with the baseball, and then last year, I took over the commissioner again, as well as BP. That's a lot to do. And, uh, like I said, the improvements we've done on the field has been significant, it's with a lot of help. This year, going into it, I now have three guys on my baseball commission. One is over the little kids, who just keep balling in, uh, coach pitch, that's the five, six, seven, eights. Uh, his name is Andrew Sykes. The next age group is seven, eight, nine, 10, and, or, I'm sorry, uh, yes, uh, no, five, six, seven, eight. The next one's nine, 10, 11, 12, that is kid pitch, and that gentleman is over, and then the last age group is 13, 14, that's the older kids that play at the north part, the Old Panther Stadium, that's the only field that can handle them as far as they can hit the ball. And that gentleman is right near the bubble room. So, on the basketball side, we had Leslie Kings, who's our commissioner, she has, now that her kids have gone through, she has resigned. She's over volleyball now, but as soon as that's over, she'll be gone, but we're gonna have two basketball commissioners. Uh, one's gonna be, looks like for the boys, and one for the girls. Uh, our softball, the Red Blues, is our, um, softball commissioner for the girls. We have two box presidents, Karen Low and, uh, Ryan Rose. We have a treasurer, Kelly Moore. We have Secretary Catherine Zarco. Uh, we have Robyn Scarborough that's over cheerleading. So, we have a lot of people that are now on board. And we did that, number one, for the help, and also it gives us a better idea of what everybody's talking and feeling, kind of the direction we're in.
So, you all meet together?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any...
There's roughly about 13 of them.
Is there any, uh, I'm, I'm now that you are on the Parks Board, I, and I, but I assume that you will be giving reports to the Parks Board on VASA?
Yes, ma'am.
On the, that's your regular meeting?
Yes, ma'am. That is clear.
So, they will be at that?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any questions? Councilman White?
Yeah, uh, one, so you guys leave responsible keys and lights and that kind of stuff?
We, we've been responsible for that for the last several years, so, uh, I know three years ago when I was involved, we got some square keys that have like an A1, 2, A1, 3, those are kind of the masters that do a bunch of stuff. Then we have the several light keys, so that falls under our realm to make sure that the lights get turned on as well as being turned back off.
And there are other local organizations besides you guys?
Yes, sir. We're good.
Councilman Moore?
Yeah. After our financial presentation just a minute ago, may I say, I know right now in this ordinance that there's, there's nothing in ordinance that's going to be able to allow the Parks Department or y'all to assign any fees to anybody. Um, but I, I know we discussed earlier that that's in process.
Yes, sir.
Um, is VASA prepared for a full auditing process, where they have to put all their numbers on the table?
Yes, sir.
Because I know that that was, uh, visited with a couple of different people, they were worried about having to do that, and there's, y'all don't feel that it's gonna be an issue?
We could, we could do that, look into it, I mean, there's different arrangements that we have, like with the school district, to use their facilities and stuff, versus the facilities that we use in the city and take care of. So, keep in mind, there are two different animals at that point, as far as, you know, it'd be one thing if the city came in and would pay you like a facility use fee that we do at the school, but then, in essence, y'all would have to take over everything to take care of the parks and stuff. And that's where we're willing to step in and do that, as long as, as we can kind of get the scheduling rights to the fields and kind of help to maintain that part, we're willing to spend some of that. I'll, I'll gladly do that, I'm sure, that's my thought. I mean, we're a nonprofit organization, so we are working towards getting the Bible 1C3. At the time I took it over, they didn't have the financial statement going back that far. We now have right at about three and a half and four. So, another year, once the entity has started, you have to go either five years, and then apply for the Bible 1C3, before I gotta shut it down, change the name, and I'm gonna apply for the Bible 1C3 at that point, so...
And the other thing with, uh, that we'd also discussed was creating, and, and obviously with Mr. White, it's gonna be very important in this process along with, you know, and the Parks Board, is the checks and balances, and creating the, um, expectations between not only VASA, but also third, you know, just the rules and regulations, the checks and balances, you know, the people that come in, but, you know, they, they're not part of VASA, the expectations for those groups, because by now, it's, all this is, is a blanket, y'all are preferred, okay, y'all are, we're giving y'all preference, but it's not, it's not creating anything else beyond that. So, it also, it gives you a, a lot of authority in theory, but it also, there's a lot of, there's a lot of room for people to fight, if that makes sense.
There was a, a document that was sent to Mr. Baker and Mr. White here when this discussion first started, when about the fees being associated and tagged on, that here's what VASA is willing to do, and you're going to expect the city to do. So, I can re, get that to you guys, y'all can take a look at it, that kind of outlines some of those things. Now, in this resolution, as we talked in the Parks Board, that would kind of be getting the park for the horse, and we'd rather get the horse in line, make sure it was done, so we had a follow-up behind it, to make sure. But I, I said, there's a, I've got a, a document that was created on what we expect the city to do versus what we do. And that was basically from the city managing, you know, mowing the yards, the fields and stuff, and then from that point, we basically take over everything else, or alive and weed control, and make sure the trash is picked up, you know, mowed and everything.
Do you have an estimated timeframe to follow up to this ordinance that would be the next step?
We can have a read from the next city council meeting. I said, we want to make sure this bill and place for, for presenting that, something.
Councilman Johnson?
I didn't have questions, but just a couple of comments. I myself am partial to VASA, my kids participated. I know that there's a lot of volunteer work, there's a lot of blood, sweat, and tears that goes in. It's either, I know it's, I know it's unpaid, it's all volunteer, and I think that anything we would do to support our youth here, and, and hands given, for children, treatment given, and letting the VASA, uh, uh, help, uh, continue to, uh, maintain, and it helps the city, it helps the school district, and, you know, all for, of, of, you know, VASA. And whether it means, you know, y'all are gonna come under, uh, whatever accountability as far as the revenues and stuff, also, people need to keep in mind that VASA also, uh, provides scholarships for the kids that cannot afford to otherwise participate, so, uh, you know, some of those things go there. But it'll all be covered in the accounting process, of course, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson.
I just wanted to say, I, yeah, from the first time that, uh, this came up with the Parks Board, and I was very concerned. I think it's so important to have something for our young people, and I think it's a wonderful approach to this. I know, I lived in Germany for, uh, nine years as a housewife and, uh, working, but, uh, over there, they spend so much time with the youth and the athletics and that, and I just think that it, uh, grows the individuals, the young people so much, and the camaraderie and that, and I'm very pleased with this, I think it's great.
At this time, is there a motion that we adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution. VASA, you...
I'll second it.
We have a motion second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Item number 10, consider and take any action necessary awarding a bid and authorizing city manager to execute a contract to purchase $973,083.20 of vehicles and equipment for the Public Works Department from Government Capital Corporation.
Mayor Council, uh, this goes back to the budget talks back in, uh, this last summer. Now, we got the majority of the water rate resolved, and did not affect overall budget. Uh, Steve's ready to move forward on the equipment loan. The proposal by Government, Government Capital is within your packet, uh, breaks out the different, uh, items to be purchased. Um, we did follow through on the recommendation of council to look for, so, uh, we fell within, uh, we fell under the, uh, the larger amount for the loan overall as well. Uh, Steve went out, uh, re-verified the loans and wanted to, uh, not only get, get us diesel vehicles, but two of the vehicles to be four-wheel drive. Um, we don't anticipate they haven't used it much, but with the issues we've had with this, these winter storms, and Steve's, uh, ability to get out of the sewer plant as well as the wells, uh, has been difficult during the season. Steve be able to come up and articulate any, any equipment issues or questions may have, since the vehicles have changed over to diesel and, and two of them are four-wheel drive, but we are, we think we are underneath, uh, what was set aside for, for the budget.
Does Council have any questions? Let's start with Council, Mr. White.
What is an interest rate?
She didn't include that in the document. She would have stated on the, on the document, on the contract. Julia, remember seeing it?
Not. You need to look at big business.
All the little scribbles and markouts are changes that they have agreed to from more legal reviewing and resetting back to them.
Exhibit B shows the amount of the interest that's included with each annual payment.
$19,41.90 per month.
Yes, ma'am.
It doesn't matter, bro, Sam, but that's how much interest you pay.
Three vehicles on the seven-year loan, and the rest of it is in the rise, out to ten years.
And there's a vacuum truck?
That's a vacuum truck, yes, ma'am.
What's the three?
Frank, I know, one of them, if they had, the first was in the three, that's three point five.
Three point one?
That was on everything, but they split it out since then.
She came in with a lower rate than the three-five. Well, my suggestion to Council is, since we don't have all, all the changes articulated, which is rushed back to us, is, uh, the interest rate. I recommend that we table it until next month, and make sure the interest rate is articulated, as well as get the changes slated directly in the contract.
On the recommendation of the city manager that we table this for 30 days till April, an April, regular April meeting?
Yes, ma'am, just 30 days.
Is that a, um, do we have a motion from Council Friday? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second that has been tabled. All those, any discussion? Anything else that we need to bring to the attention?
I, I mean, I wasn't trying to give us, I mean, if it's a decent interest rate, I was just asking what it was.
Well, we really need to know what it is. It's a good question, yeah.
It's a good question.
I wasn't trying to stop the whole process.
No, it's true. We, since, since we have a meeting pushed back this month, it'll only be a few weeks. My recommendation is we go ahead and have it articulated in the contract.
Okay.
I thought it was in there, she did give us a preliminary document that did state what the interest rate was. Uh, it was lower than three-five.
Okay.
Let's, let's get the, we'll, we'll get it all articulated, we'll get the changes made, they agreed to the changes, but they just didn't get them back in time, right, Julie? So, let's get you a clean document that has the interest rate on it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Item 10 is untitled for the next regular council meeting, number 11.
Can I ask a question on, uh, 10 and 11?
Okay, well, I'll read 11, and you can, uh, consider and take any action necessary regarding adopting a decision to enter into financial agreements for the acquisition of vehicles and equipment for the Public Works Department. Uh, okay, and this, this ties into number 10, which we can table also, uh, and, uh, this one, you, you can tell me.
Okay, my question is, it says staff recommends on both of them, and I'd like to know who on the staff recommends, so we have a name and a face with the recommendation.
Stephen, I...
Yeah, do best. Okay, are there any other questions regarding this?
All we want to table it also?
Yeah, I have, oh, not for a motion.
Okay, I'm saying.
At this time, since they are both connected, we will need a motion that we table this one also to be considered at the next regular council meeting. Is there any further, uh, is there a motion? Is there a second? Is there a second against a motion and a second, any further discussion? Is there a second against a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Number twelve, consider and take any action necessary regarding adopting an ordinance, setting the dates, times and place for the public hearing to consider updates to the land use assumptions, LVA's capital improvement plans, CIP, and water and wastewater impact fees amendments. City manager.
Mayor Council would love to pass, pass and draft our contract engineers for discussions.
Mayor Council, as requested during the budget cycle last year, we have begun the process of looking at your current impact fees and updating them by state law. There are other steps that have to happen to occur. This is the, this one and the next, twelve and thirteen relate to that. Twelve is an ordinance that puts a sixty-day notice out to the community saying that you're in the process of looking at your land use assumptions, which are used as a baseline for development, what tweaks might happen in the next five to ten years, the capital improvement program, the infrastructure that will serve those land use assumptions, and then the adjusted water and wastewater impact fees. So, this is, this is the ordinance that gets the ball rolling to start the public hearing process, and there are certain state requirements for timing to make sure that, you know, everything is adopted in accordance with state law. Can I get any answer to any questions about that?
On either of these, on late, about six-thirty, person.
That would be the final hearing on the impact fees. There's some interim, the next item is appointing a committee to review those assumptions in the capital program. They make a written recommendation back to the council, which you'll see at your next meeting, and then that gives you that thirty-day window to post for the, for the information on the impact fees.
Are there any questions regarding this? Let's go outside the other church.
Again, I asked who, under the recommendation, it is recommended by whom that the council adopt this ordinance? Well, staff is so general. I'd like to know a name and a face of whatever, years later we come back, who did, you know, who done it? That we have a name.
Well, on this particular one, it's Steve White. Well, the department head authorization was Steve White, Director of Public Works, and approved for council consideration was Frank Baker, city manager.
So, the recommendation is, it's recommended by Steve White of this city?
Yes. Any other questions?
The May thirteenth, yeah, May thirteenth meeting, six-thirty. Yes, it's in wherever, wherever we happen to park ourselves that day.
Well, it will be at the Grayson, here at the Southland Campus, President.
Okay, our community center will be ready by then.
Well, whether it is or not, this is where we're going to for that, I assume. But because we, we're not very speculative, we're going to have a definite, it has to have a definite location.
Okay.
But this one definitely will be available at the Grayson.
Okay. There'll be a notice in the newspaper thirty days before the hearing, and so that notice will need to state the actual location.
Actual location, okay. No other questions?
Counselor Smith? Counselor McKaskin? Counselor Moore? Counselor White? Okay. And at this time, is there a motion that we adopt this ordinance, setting the date, time and place for the public hearing? Do I have a motion?
Certainly.
Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Motion passed. Next item, consider and take any action necessary regarding appointment of a capital projects committee to determine eligible projects. This committee is typically comprised of the Planning and zoning commission and a representative of the real estate or development community and the extraterritorial jurisdiction. These are two names. So, I have, I have the Planning and zoning commission plus a representative, and I have a recommendation of the representative, representative of the real estate or development community as Bill Benton. Are there any other recommendations at this time? Counselor White?
You saw the name.
You're saying?
Bill Benton is the only one that hears.
Well, there's only, it just says the committee is comprised of the Planning and zoning commission and a representative of the real estate or development community, okay, and the extraterritorial jurisdiction. He is a real estate agent, and he is, does represent the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Get it there. Counselor White?
So, should we, instead of just picking one, should we, do they have some sort of board that they meet with, they're hungry or anything like that, or real estate people? And they want to say something they want to?
No, it's just our, our recommendations. Do you have anyone you would like to recommend? Counselor Moore?
It's just, if he's, and of course, he's going to be okay with it, if he's not, we're going to have to come back.
I think Mr. Benton is a good choice.
And this is also under the direction of the department head, Steve White, correct?
That is.
Well, it's recommended by, the recommendation for Mr. Benton is recommended by me. No, just recommend, recommend the council take the necessary action.
Yes. If you're going to consider changing the impact fees, having the advisory committee is a required component of going through the process to do that, under state law.
State law, okay.
Then is there a motion at this time regarding the appointment of the committee?
Swing and a reach.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll say.
All those, any, any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Number third, number, just a moment. Number fourteen, consider and take any action necessary regarding passage of an ordinance for healing ordinance number four-four-six and six-nine-nine in section two of ordinance number seven oh seven, setting rules, regulations, procedures, rates and fees for utility services provided by the city of Anoski. This was authorized by Steve White, Director of Public Works. Do you have any comments that you would like to make regarding this?
This is what we worked on in our workshop session, work session, and our rates, and this is what proposed, that's what we need to propose for this thing.
Are there any questions? Counselor Moore?
Yeah. One question I had, I was, as I read through, is that right now we have a vacation service. Is there anything in here addressing that?
We don't offer the vacation service.
Anymore?
No.
So, my house on vacation is still on vacation, right?
Your second house? I don't think it's set to vacation, but I'd have to check.
Yeah, well, you all said it as on vacation, because.
Do you know how many years ago that was?
Oh.
And I know it was several years ago. I remember talking about the vacation, but since, since I was doing the utility billing, which has probably been about seven or eight years, it hasn't been something that has been offered. I think that my understanding from the powers that be then was, yeah, I guess if you were grandfathered, you're grandfathered until you under your vacation status, and they're not going to offer that to you anymore, unless, unless you all decide to change the ordinance and offer that.
And an explanation is whenever the facility is not in use, you can stop the.
Suspend the billing.
Suspend the billing, yeah. And then there was no charge to start it up again, should I decide to do that, okay?
But once it's started, that goes on all that.
Yeah. Okay, well, and I was just wondering if we would want to do that, because I didn't find it in here. Under section nine, liability of city for damage, I, I've been asked by neighbors, example, there's like no grease trap at Ramano's restaurant, and so two of the homes on Fulton, Fulton and Waco, end up with problems with backup, and I was just wondering with this, the city shall not be liable for any damage for any customer of any utility service, furnishes, the backflow and sewage and all that. And I was wondering, does the city have a requirement there since they did not require the restaurant to have a grease trap? Or is that the owner's, the property owner's problem?
It's responsibility, but it doesn't have to have a grease trap. It depends, the husband and the users will self-contain.
Okay, so when the sewers back up and they can't flush toilets, do they call the city or?
Can we directly attribute that to the entire restaurant?
You know, I'm in the work between two states. What one state would require on those, and one state that I've worked in, they require all food processing, whether it was just assembly or because you had washing and the same stuff. If the state Texas does require the same process, food, all, all of them could be required to have grease out. Now, grease trap may be small or maybe large, but on Ramon, I mean, on that grease trap, on that one line, we haven't seen a whole lot of grease that we flushed out when we actually worked it. Most of it's just decayed line.
Well, I thought at one point we even had to pay for a hotel or motel for the Borman's to stay in until it was cleared.
West Point.
Okay, but there, there is a, a problem on, on that line, and I was just wondering, you know, in that particular section there, section nine, the liability, you know, who or if that's not even the right spot, is there a requirement that the city be responsible for clearing the lines?
If it's a main, I don't know where it's going to require.
So, you would be, you would do that if, as the toilets start backing up?
If the clog is in the city main.
Yes.
Then we would do that.
Okay. Okay, and then I just have one typo, but you know me and my typos.
Where is it?
Where is it? It's, I think, okay, on page nineteen of twenty-six B, and it says, oof, the request, not even if the request, I presume. Do I need to announce that to yous? Do you see it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Right here, if the request. That's it.
Counselor Smith? Do you have any comments? Counselor McKaskin? Counselor Moore? Counselor White?
Yeah, I do, on page twenty-three. I don't understand exactly why we left the monthly minimum charges for water connection for fire sprinkler system, we left the connection fees never been the same as they were before. We left the usage fees the same as they were before. We didn't change those to be the same as all the other water items.
Say it again, please, sir.
Okay, if you'll notice that the, the fees are like a three-quarter inch is forty dollars and twenty-four cents, we get a fee for a three-quarter inch for a regular water line is thirty-eight seventy-seven. For the volume, it's two, I mean, on here, it goes through ninety dollars. The new rate that we decided on actually goes through five dollars. I think those should be the same, same chart, the same amounts as the non, as the regular water we did.
Yeah, Jennifer had made some notes on those on this draft. Those never came up during any of your discussions, so I don't want to take the liberty of changing what was in place without you all giving that direction.
I just, it's, I, it's, to me, it's more simple, we just leave them all the same.
And you can, you can approve it with subject to that being changed to match.
Would you state that correction specifically, Counselor White?
Uh, yeah.
Correction.
Y'all gonna do it then? Everybody get it? Okay, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance number six-ninety-nine with the following changes, the monthly minimum charge and volume charge for water connection for fire sprinkler systems, the connection rates and the volume rates be changed to be the same as normal water rates are for a normal connection.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passed unanimously. Number fifteen, consider and take any action necessary regarding passage of an ordinance, amending section three of ordinance seven oh seven regarding credits for utility bills. I believe this was done by Counselor McKaskin?
Yes, ma'am.
And would you like to comment on number fifteen?
Yes, ma'am.
What we come up with, and which was, which was approved at the last meeting, we, what the committee had come up with was a flat charge or amount for a refund based on the size of the water here. And what the proposal was that was approved last month was an attempt to refund based on usage because the increase caused by the retroactive rate change affected users of the, of the water more so than just a flat fee. And so, what we came up with was the bills that were, we had the billing as of September first, billing as of October first, took the difference, and if there was an increase, we calculated the program of refund based on the amount of dollars that were spent out of town. That was what was approved. A couple of days after council meeting, Mr. McManus contacted me and told me that, or he showed me that that wasn't really accurate with it, and nothing's accurate unless we go in and we look at each of the thirteen hundred accounts and determine what the increase was. What he did is he came up with another proposal that showed the actual usage based on the ratings that showed how many gallons were used per user. And as an. And as an example, if someone were to, one other step that we used was anyone that either had a decrease in their cost for the month of October, or it was a zero, those were eliminated from the, from the calculation. And the refunds were computed based on the others. What, when you look at the actual usage, someone that, for example, used thirty thousand gallons in September, but reduced their usage to fifteen thousand gallons in October, would not, would show a decrease in their bill, therefore would be excluded from the refund, but they still used fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand gallons as opposed to the thirty from the prior month. So they are entitled to a refund because they did use the water. So that was what this proposal attempted to do is address the issue of those that were eliminated from the prior calculation. But it also took out the information that was given on the first proposal that was approved was only the account number that didn't differentiate between the size of the water meter, where the location was, and it also included fire meters. Well, this is about the consumer and the refund is to the consumer, whether it be a business or an individual. So the meters were eliminated from the calculation for this new proposal. And bottom line is the new proposal has a comparison there of the pro rata refund as I calculated. What the committee had proposed is a flat refund for everyone that had an increase. But it also has a volume refund added to that, the committee refund that approximates, not quite, but approximates the refund as calculated by the, by the pro rata that I used. The only difference is, is that, you know, I applied the pro rata indiscretionary across the board to every, every account. And that created a different refund amount for every consumer, which would require input to each of the thirteen hundred accounts anyway. So using the refund based on the meter size, people would still get refunds, but it averaged out that some higher, some lower, comes up with an average amount that corresponds with the, with the meter charge. For example, the smallest one's twenty-five dollars and seventy cents. Now, the positive side on that is that the dollar amount, the total amount to be refunded, fifty-one thousand as compared to fifty-three thousand in the original calculation. But the, you know, on the, on the other side, the, some people will be getting a refund a little bit more, some of them get a little bit less. It's not really an exact science, of course, because we're not looking at each account individually. So that's, that's what is proposed. We have approved the one that I originally submitted. The second one is what we came up with, and since there is a material difference in the amount and the calculation, I recommend that we come back to council for discussion and/or action.
Okay, if I understand this correctly, say I only had a five dollar increase on my water bill or ten dollars, but I would get, by this new proposal, I would still, I would get the twenty-five seventy-eight, right? So it's not refunding, this new proposal actually doesn't refund the amount that the increase was. It just goes for a flat rate. So was it that we could not refund the amount that you, that simplified? Is it that you could not put in that computer the rate that it was in August through September? And, and I'm sure there's got to be a spreadsheet of how much water you use. Can you not put that in at that rate and look at what they were charged and simply make that deduction that that is what they are going to get that refund on their bill? Whether they were, it was increased two hundred dollars or two dollars? Is that not possible?
That's, that's what is done with what we approved last month.
Yes, but that's not what this, that's not what this proposal, yes. So I'm asking, was that not possible?
With the original information, it was not. This information here, what you're talking about, can be calculated, but that's not what's here. We can go back and calculate.
But what I'm saying is I know that when you raise the water rate, you also raise the sewer rate. You raised, actually raised four rates. But if you put those rates in a computer and put in that amount, can you not come up with the amount that it should have been as opposed to the amount that it actually was?
Jennifer, the software, would it allow you that that rate that charge? I mean, the idea of
I'm just talking about a printout of what it if, if the rate had not increased for those thirty days. And then that printout as opposed to the printout of what we did charge, and the difference would be what the refund would be on their bill.
We, the software doesn't do that, but we can, we talked about building an Excel spreadsheet and inputting all of that data and then having it, I guess, auto calculate what your bill would have been had the rate not been changed, and then that would equal the credit.
So you, you have a, that's what we agreed on, is that?
That's what we agreed on.
That's what this can, that's what it was proposed and agreed on. So, but why did we, why was, why did we discard that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but what was agreed on, I think, is, I guess, it is based, it's the percentage of change.
Yes, because I didn't, I didn't have the other information on the spreadsheet. I didn't have the actual gallons you used. I was going off of what people were charged.
Okay, would you say, she's going to say we can and you?
No, well, what I'm going to say, the, the worksheet you had last month just had the percentage of change in the bill. It didn't have the change in volume. So that, you know, for instance, the softball fields in August, when they were initially built, had zero gallons. They didn't water at all during August. When their September bill came in, they had six hundred and six thousand gallons. So the difference in that net bill was, I got it right here, was fifty-five hundred dollars. But it's because they had a zero base bill of two hundred dollars and it jumped to fifty-four hundred because they started using it again. The error with the previous calculation was it didn't take into account the actual volume used to, to charge against at the old rate, I guess it would be.
But if you, but if you put it in, the volume that was used, and you have a spreadsheet that shows that, and how much this person was charged or the city was charged or whoever. And you put that in, and then you calculate that amount by the old rate. Would it not come out as the exact, the exact amount that you were charged from the new rate to the old rate? And that difference would be your refund?
Right, and that's, that's not what was originally brought to you. And we, we can build a spreadsheet that will do that. We don't have one, but we could build one.
But it can be done.
It would be time consuming, but it can be done.
But we've spent a lot of time on this and it's still not what the council had discussed. I have a question too. In neither of these proposals does it, correct me if I'm wrong, I can't see that it shows the sewer rate that was But it all comes out to one bill. But not, not in these. It does not show the sewer rate. So that should, if we're making any changes, it should be included in that water usage plus the sewer because that is a, their sewer rates were charged based on the water usage. So that needs to be considered there as well. But if you put the spreadsheet as she's talking about, wouldn't that all be in there?
In her form, in the kind you're asking for, yes. And the one we're looking at right now, no, it's not there.
It's not there.
No. So this would have to be changed to implement that. But the other way, yes, that's right. Because I went back and looked, I know I have one neighbor that complained he had a four hundred dollar bill. He's getting the same things back as I am. I get, I had a hundred and thirty dollar bill. So there has to be something wrong somewhere.
Yeah, it's not quite fair, but the spreadsheet, I feel like, would be. And the comparison
But it will take longer to do.
Well, we've already taken quite some time. So I guess we do have some time. So that can be done, is, can that be done, Mr. Jaska?
I think so. I mean, I think we've got the basis for it here, and all we have to do is plug in the rates according to the volume used.
So Jennifer says so, and do you, Mr. McManus?
Yes, that can be done. Yes, that can be done.
So
Now, Robert, your, your suggestion is to use
Is this?
What we approved last month? Or what we approved last month, so are we just have something to put in there?
My, my recommendation would be to would be to rescind, repeal, what's the word, to
Nix.
Modify, modify.
Yeah.
What we came up with last month with the new calculation, bring it back and approve.
Yes, we can do this.
If there's any needing discussion.
Oh, yes, I can, I can, we can. We can, we can do this.
Well, he's got the spreadsheet, so we know that, yeah, but it can be done.
Well, in the Water Committee's recommendation was not to go in and touch each account, but to generalize and give it based on the size of the meter. And the proposal that Mr. Jaska brought and that we worked out together was a hybrid of the volume rate plus that so that we only have to really go in and touch thirty accounts and we can distribute the refunds within a month versus having to wait till all the calculations are done.
But that doesn't include the sewer, does it? No. That would have to be
Well, it, it's, it is just a ratio, so yes, I mean technically it does, yes. On, on the base rate, on the base rate plus the volume calculation of that.
Is ratio fair to our citizens?
Yes, for water usage, it would be because they're being charged the same ratio on the sewer that they were on the water.
And how much do you say your plan that you're holding up there will refund to the citizens?
It's still that same, it's still the full, the full amount that is available.
You can't have both, you can't have both, my friend. If we're refunding water at fifty thousand, whatever it is, and we're supposed to include the sewer that we overcharged for too, you can't refund fifty thousand and cover both of them because we charged on both sides. You're just refunding on one side.
I, this, this calculation is just based on whatever the total refund is, water and sewer or just water or whatever. I didn't, it doesn't
We overcharged the citizens more than fifty thousand dollars.
Well, we agree.
But we're only going to refund fifty thousand.
But you ref, I don't know how the refund amount was determined. My mind does take the ratio of what the refund is as given to me by the city.
We, we overcharged more than fifty thousand dollars. So we're combining water and sewer both.
So what we have is a recommendation from Councilman Jaska that we do recalculate. Would you like to modify this, that we recalculate? That's number fifteen, and the action necessary is that we do modify this to, would you please state how that works?
Now, you're going to, you're going to modify to refund water and sewer both? Or just water?
We're talking about
Well, I'm going to, we're going to determine whether this is water or water and sewer. I was under the impression it's just water. If it does not include water, then yes, we would need to include sewer. Okay, so the first, first step is we're going to determine if it's water or water and sewer. If it doesn't include sewer, we'll include the sewer. Okay, and what we'll do is we will use the information on this spreadsheet here that determines what the actual usage is. And like the, like the mayor said, determine what the cost of that usage was September versus October. And apply to the, the change in the rate, and that will determine the refund.
My, my whole objection to this is we as a council unanimously approved the plan last month for refund. We unanimously approved that. And then somebody, somewhere in the process of this last month, decided they didn't like that, so they brought back, said, we're going to do something different. We gave City Hall the direction from this council to give the refund as stated in the minutes. Somebody decided they didn't want to do that. So they came, they brought back to us, brought something back to us, said, well, we need to really do it this way. Are we going to have something presented to us next month and we approve, and then the month after that, we say, ah, we really didn't like that? Who was it that decided that what the council unanimously voted to do, to give the refund based on a document? Who was it that decided, we don't want to do that? Was it engineers, was it city manager, was it the water clerk? Who decided to not do what the council said to do last month? That's my question.
What happened was council agreed to develop ordinances, is that right, Julie? To do the refund, to redo all, all the water ordinances into one and put the refund in a separate one. In the course of that action of developing those ordinances, there was, there was a conversation between Robert Jaska and Lyndon McManus as far as the refund and the structure of it. Robert came to talk to me, we discussed it. The motion was to approve Robert's motion, or Robert's proposal. Robert would like to modify the proposal. I asked him, would you like to take this back before council? He said, I would. So we put it back on the agenda to bring it back in for consideration when y'all adopt these ordinances. Y'all can adopt them with the previous motion. You can adopt it with Robert's proposal. The opportunity is there. It's all about bringing opportunities and choices to the city council.
You should bring all of those to us, and the city attorney's job is to guide us through that process of the steps that we need to take. Now, if I don't, if I remember correctly, we bunched a whole bunch of stuff in together. And then the comment was made, well, I don't know if we can really do that because it wasn't on the agenda. And I believe, Julie, that was you that said, it's your job to guide this council to effectively execute our job.
You did two, two separate things last month. One was you approved recommendations from committee and some other recommendations Ms. Hoover had about the procedures for changing water rates. And said you wanted the water rates in the master ordinance with everything else. And that's what you just approved in the last agenda item. You also had a separate motion which changed the water rates effective, that already went to effect, and adopting the refunds that Mr. Jaska had recommended. So you, one thing you did approve, and the other, which was the rates and the credits to be given to people. And then the other thing was to bring back a master ordinance. So the credits were approved.
Yes, and the direction was given to execute those credits, right. And then somebody decided in the And then somebody decided in the course of that month that we didn't, we don't wanna do that. We're not gonna take the advice of, of the direction of the council. Now, it's, it, it's the management of this city and the attorney to lead us and direct us as a council to perform our jobs properly, and that's not being done.
Then you would rather have them do the wrong thing, and because it's been passed on the council, and not really fix what the problem was. Is that what you're saying?
We...
They should've went on, "I don't care if we approved it or not, if they see that it's something wrong with it."
We agree.
They should bring it back to us and let us talk about it.
To do something, and if somebody chooses not to do it, they'll be...
They didn't choose not to do it, they came back to us with a problem. You're assuming, I guess, that they shouldn't have come back to us with a problem, they should've just went ahead and done it.
They should have given us the direction in the beginning...
They didn't know this in the beginning.
...to go down the right path, instead of letting us go down the wrong path, make a wrong decision, and then come back and have to correct it.
They didn't know about the problem yet.
Well, then whose job is it to anticipate that?
I guess it was that committee's that came up with the...
Blame it on somebody that's not here. Blame it on somebody that's sitting in this room.
You had options, and you had choices.
The ultimate decision comes...
You didn't choose to follow the committee, you chose to do something different.
I'm talking probably right now.
Right, okay, but you're, but you're directing it towards me, you're directing it towards us, and if you have any critical comments, you should hold those until executive session.
We voted to do that.
You should hold those until executive session.
Why?
Why? It's, it's...
Because...
Am I wrong?
Well, the, um...
What you wanna do is hide it in executive session.
No, sir, I, I stated exactly what your options and what your choices were. You were wrong choices by the committee, and you chose not to follow that. You chose a separate, a separate avenue. We brought you another avenue, because the ordinance was still being developed and designed. Don't you want choices?
That is not the presentation that was given last month.
Right.
And there is no reason to hide anything in executive session, because these people that are here...
No, the critical decisions, decisions are in executive session.
...be aware of what's going on. The report was made by Jim Sand to accept Robert Jaska's refund proposal. Mr. Jaska explained that when he did his proposal, it was not, not all of it was available to him, and that he had worked with Mr. McManus on this new proposal. Uh, we do not have to accept this proposal or the manner in which it has, it is done. Councilman Jaska has suggested that we, uh, do a modification on this, not accept this one, but do a modification on it. I suggest that it be, uh, brought back to the council next month. Uh, you want, it can be, credit should, uh, could be modified in both ways. So, I would, I would like to see perhaps a choice, or the, for the council, uh, uh, Robert Jaska's refund proposal original, I guess this one, and the modification that would be done for, uh, the exact amount of what the, uh, increase was. So, that is three separate things. Uh, would you be, uh, all right with that, Mr. Sand? Would you have three choices since this, since he has with...
I will be on the condition that the refunds are made immediately within a 45-day timeframe, because we're gonna drag this on till the end of the year, end of the fifth of the year, and that's what I don't want to do. These people deserve their refund.
Well, we need to, uh, we have a council meeting. This is a late council meeting, it will not be that long. I cannot guarantee how long it will take them. I think they would do it, uh, expediently, as quickly as possible, but I cannot guarantee a day, nor do I think that they can say, "Okay, we can have all of this available immediately." But, cause at the next council meeting, this would have to be, uh, the procedure would have to be selected, and then it would go to the start.
And we will know if it includes water and sewer, or whatever, so that both are incorporated in it.
Now, Robert, what do you want? This, this was your plan.
Well, she basically summarized what I recommended, or tried to put in the words that I was...
Then at the next council meeting, we're gonna have the three presentations, three presentations for council's choice, and at that time, one of them will go into effect.
Guaranteed?
As quickly as possible.
Or are we gonna do what we're doing here?
We'll do the very best that we can. That's, I'm...
I'll have an ordinance done that will just attach as an exhibit whichever one of the three you adopt. If you stick with the original, that's already done, but if you pick one of the other two, the ordinance will be ready.
This one's already done, so all that, that will leave to be done is the third one, which I suggested.
Yes, so that, that can be signed by the mayor that, you know, that night or the day after the council meeting, and the staff concerned.
And we will, uh, need a motion on that at this time. And...
A motion is almost ready.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Almost, any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Number 16, consider and take any action necessary regarding a request by Frank Walker and Ed Hank Blake, if I've pronounced that correctly, to abandon an alleyway in Walk 15 of the original town plat at the intersection of East Jefferson Street, which is part of Market 121 and Sherman Street. Is there any discussion regarding this?
I would like to request, um, that this be tabled to the next meeting, um, in discussing the replies with Julie. Um, this is the same block that you've seen the last couple of council meetings. Um, I think he's had some difficulty in getting petitions from all of the adjacent property owners, so as he acquires a petition, he's submitted them. Um, with that, the block has kind of become muddied as far as who the adjacent property owners are to the particular alleyway abandonment being requested. So, um, in reviewing it with Julie, I, I think that I would need an, an additional petition before it, it can be approved.
Okay, do you want to just table it until the proper paperwork is submitted?
Submitted, yes, sir.
Okay, and that would be 16 and 17?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On the recommendation of Jennifer, is there a motion that we table this until the proper paperwork is submitted?
I'll make that question.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will adjourn, and the city council will go into, convene into executive session pursuant to section 591, point 071, to consult with the city attorney regarding security at public meetings. Number 19, we have department reports, we will start, um, over here. Jennifer, you have anything to report?
Sure. She's... Uh, tomorrow, if y'all are available, we're having Riley Crowds coming back home, so we're gonna be escorting him to town. The route posted on Facebook, the basis is gonna be 121, Highway 5 North, we're gonna go behind the high school, and then take him to his house.
What time will that be?
Uh, we're hoping around 11:30, 11:45 in the morning.
I guess if my dog will howl, and I'll know.
What, yeah.
What's around?
It's gonna be, uh, 121 east from 75, and we'll go north on Highway 5, and then behind the high school.
Keith Smith?
I don't have the sign.
Two points.
That's Mr. David, then?
Uh, next, we, next we have the city manager's performance.
Mayor Council got good news and not so good news. Uh, as far as community centers concerned, I spoke to Lisa Catch from TML Insurance, which covers all of our facilities and equipment. Um, she had before, a week before last, she had called, um, she wasn't believing what the adjuster was telling her, as far as the extent of the damage to the community center and the fire department, police department, and all the ready for cohorts at, at TML Legal, or not TML Legal, but TML Insurance. They wanted to send their own engineer up from Houston on their dime and come and evaluate the whole structure. Uh, it was to their, uh, it didn't work out in their favor. Um, he was more, uh, he provided more scrutiny, uh, found more damage to the structure than, than the, uh, the initial structural engineer had, uh, had initially assessed. Um, and before he left, he told us that the community center, the fire department base, which is the metal building structure, that the roof was going to have to be torn all the way off, and the supporting structures were gonna have to be replaced. Um, that's good in that. The good is that we will get, we will, we'll get repairs done to the structure, but the bad part is we're pushing ourselves further and further out and getting this done. Um, he agreed that the fire department roof, over the, over the barracks need to be ripped off, and that the damage be evaluated, um, as well as where the leaking was coming through between the separation, the police department, and, uh, and, and the metal structure be evaluated, be, uh, be fixed as well. Got in contact with her, had heard with her, heard from her within a week. Took her a few days to get back. She said Mr. Peebles, uh, which was the engineer that came out, um, has gotten his evaluation, evaluation back to TML. Um, he's, they're reviewing it right now. They're gonna be calling me tomorrow morning, and, uh, and sending me and Mark Finley, who is the adjuster out of Paris that works for TML, to bring us all the information, and make sure we're, uh, uh, on the same page. And, uh, in that way, he'll start building a repair estimate based upon their engineers' recommendations. But, uh, we actually did get some pretty substantial statements based upon what I told you before he even left the building, um, before he even left property. Um, I know it's been frustrating, I know we wanna get friends at the library and council back in, in the community center, wanna make sure that the base and everything's safe for the police and fire. Just please bear with me, and we'll get this all worked out with the insurance and with the adjusters, and get the needed repairs that be made to, to the buildings. Um, on a good note, the, uh, the city of Van Alstine, for the first time, has been recognized with the Texas Comptroller's Leadership Circle Gold Award for Financial Transparency. Uh, everything, they evaluated everything we have up on the website, as far as our finances, our, our check register, uh, past audits, and, uh, we, we met the gold standard. Um, I believe the only other community around us that has it is Melissa. Is that right, Jennifer?
Uh, I think Anna is gold and Melissa is silver.
Anna, that's right, my bad. Melissa's silver, Anna's gold. So, we will be on par with Anna as far as financial transparency. Uh, we do have opportunity for platinum, um, but we are waiting for a, uh, what is it from First Southwest?
Debt analysis.
A debt analysis from First Southwest to put up on the website and get posted for everyone to review. Uh, we'll contact them, let them know, they review it, and we have potential to, to get platinum, which is the highest award through the Texas Comptroller. So, that's the good news. Okay. I wish it did, it'd come, it'd come with a fancy little, uh, if you go to their websites, it comes with a fancy little, uh, uh, PDF that you can put on the webpage that shows everybody your little part of the gold circle, transfer, transfer, uh, direct everybody to Financial Transparency page, and, uh, no, no grant, just recognition, and it'll be a, be a frank plaque as well, so.
Okay, we have council, council comments, council in place.
Uh, the one thing I wanna do is just let all the people that are running for council stand up and introduce, introduce themselves.
Can we do the, the opening up to everybody? I don't know, is that, I don't, can we?
Is that legal?
Is that legal?
I think it is, recognition of citizens.
Recognition of...
Recognition of citizens, that's what I was saying.
Should follow the recognition of...
But that's about politics. Yeah? Unless we have an, um, I would tell everybody who's running, we, it's not open to everybody on this.
Yeah, it, it's probably better not to use any city resources to...
No problem.
You can't use any of the...
Supporter person, I'm sorry.
Not political.
Not, oh, well, that wasn't political, that was just introducible.
Councilman Moore, any comments?
Uh, just want, I wanna thank our staff, and I thought the audit went, went very well. Uh, I appreciate everybody's hard work. I mean, I, I know you get a lot of criticism, but you guys put in a lot of hard work, and it's, it's not easy. I wanna thank you guys, I think I did a spectacular job. Thank you.
Councilman Jaska?
I would like to go first.
So, is there a second?
Councilman Moore? Yeah, transparency has been one of my main, uh, things, and bravo, Jennifer, for the Comptroller's Award.
I also want to join, I think the Comptroller's Award is a great thing, and I want to commend all their staff. I'm doing well, and at this time, is there a motion that we adjourn? Is there a second? Second? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is almost unanimous, some handed it out, but they weren't. We are now adjourned at 9:35. Thank you very much for your attendance.